Um, City Manager reports.
Jason Fairbrush is here to talk about some of the recent improvements we've made to the transit system, and I think he's going to introduce his new Assistant Director, too.
Yes, I sure will. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Would like to start off by introducing our new Assistant Director, Kevin Mulcahy joins us. He joins us most recently from a transit system in Virginia, actually, and we're looking forward to what he can bring to the table to help us to continue to improve our bus system here in Oklahoma City. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and get started and just certainly thank you for the opportunity to present this transit system update to you, and I think we would all agree that there continues to be momentum for public transportation in Oklahoma City, and I think I have some exciting information to share with you this morning that will at least demonstrate how we've been able to implement enhancements to our bus system and some of the results of those enhancements. So I'll talk a little bit about our ridership, a little bit about our system reliability. I'd like to show you some of the new technology that's now available to our customers, and then finish up by talking a little bit about our night service, which I'm pleased to announce began last night. So very, very, off to a good start with the night service. So I thought we'd start by taking a look at our system map, and you can see that on your screen. We're very proud of how the map here represents our bus system. If you'll recall, some of the recommendations from the Transit System Analysis, some of those recommendations included straightening our routes out, making the routes more direct, allowing for more connections within the system, and I think if you'll look at this map here, you'll see that. And again, we're very proud of the way the map has turned out. We actually were fortunate enough to receive a first-place award from the American Public Transportation Association for our system map, so I wanted to make sure I had a chance to show it off a little bit this morning. Besides what you see on the map, though, as you'll recall, some of the other enhancements that we've been able to make, namely, have been frequency enhancements with our Monday through Friday fixed route service. All of our bus routes now run, I should say, almost all of our bus routes now run on 30-minute frequencies. We have two 15-minute high-frequency corridors between downtown and 23rd and Penn and downtown and the OU Health Sciences Center. And so frequency was a big part of those enhancements, but along with the clock face headways at the transfer center, which of course reduce wait time and make the system more predictable. And then another part of the study was looking at our bus stop placement, and I'll visit with you a little bit about some of the things we've done to address our bus stops as well. So as an organization, as an agency, I think we've done, we've made great strides in implementing some of those first-tier recommendations that came from that Transit System Analysis, and with the additional funding over the last couple of years from City Council and the support of the COTPA Board of Trustees, we feel like we've kind of moved to that next level, and we've been able to start implementing some of that second tier of recommendations that were made by our consultant, which was more frequency enhancements and beginning to look at evening service, Sunday service, and eventually more high-frequency corridors. So we're really pleased with the ability to continue to kind of work this plan and bring more enhancements online. So one of the things, of course, we want to know is we feel internally we've made some enhancements, we have a better system, but we really want to get some feedback from our customers. What do our riders think about the enhancements? And I think probably the best way to look at that is through ridership and what it has done since we implemented the system enhancements. And this chart that you have in front of you goes back to April of 2014, and what's significant about that is that is the month that we implemented our enhancements and changed our routes. The red line on your graph, of course, is calendar year 2014, and we're comparing average daily ridership for each one of those months back to the same month of the previous year in 2013. And you can see by the red line that we have exceeded average daily ridership each month since implementing our route changes when we compare back to the previous year. So we're very pleased with that trend, and we think it's a good sign that the changes we've been able to make have been successful in terms of garnering more ridership and providing a better system. Overall, we're up about 8% cumulatively on our Monday through Friday service, and then we actually had a couple of milestones over the last six months. September, you'll notice, we had almost 12,000 passenger trips on average per day. We actually had one day in September where we provided over 14,000 passenger trips in one day, which is essentially a new record for us as far as any of the recent history we were able to look at. October was another significant month for us in that we provided cumulatively over 266,000 passenger trips in October, Monday through Friday. And again, that's another very significant number for us. We couldn't find a month where we had exceeded that cumulative total in any of the recent history. So we're very pleased with what we've seen from a ridership perspective. Now, I wanted to include and just talk quickly about our Saturday service, and I really wanted to include this graph really more of a, as a contrast to the Monday through Friday service because we did not make near the enhancements to the Saturday service that we did the Monday through Friday. In fact, the frequency enhancements were pretty limited. We don't have any of our Saturday routes that are actually on 30-minute frequencies. And although the ridership has held its own, we've seen about a 3% increase overall. You'll notice that we don't have near the growth as we do on the Monday through Friday where, namely, the frequency enhancements came into play. So I thought that might be a useful comparison for Council to look at this morning.
Jason, what happened in December of '13? Is that an anomaly?
There was bad weather on the weekends in December last year. We had a storm coming every weekend, like three weekends in a row.
Oh, that's right. Right around, yeah.
If you remember, that may have impacted on our Christmas sales.
Christmas shopping, exactly. Okay, that's just...
Yeah, it's exactly weather. The Mayor is correct. And then the next slide here will give you a sense of our on-time performance, and I wanted to share these numbers with you for a couple of reasons. Is one, we are now reporting our on-time performance or our system reliability dramatically different than we've ever been able to report it in the past, and that's because of the AVL technology, the Automatic Vehicle Locators, that we have installed on each one of the embarked buses. And so when you look at the numbers, admittedly, there's some work for us to do, but at the same time, I would say this is our bare-bones baseline of where we've started at, now that we can collect this data from our AVL system. So what this data represents essentially is every single stop in our bus system, almost 1,300 bus stops, and it's every time a bus during the day hits that stop. And we consciously made the effort to begin tracking our on-time performance in this fashion because we really feel like it's a better representation of what the customer experiences. And so in order to become and improve our performance, we want to make sure we're measuring exactly what it is that our customers are experiencing when they're out there trying to catch the bus. A couple of things that are worth noting is, for a bus to be considered on time, the bus can be no more than one minute early to the stop and no more than five minutes late. So that's kind of the threshold that we're looking at. The other thing that I think is worth pointing out is we did start in July and August when we kind of first started keeping score this way at about 60% on-time performance, but you can see that we've actually increased that over a six-month period by almost 11%. So I feel confident that we've got a handle on it. We are paying more attention to it. We are doing things to improve our on-time performance, and although January is not complete, through the 25th of January, our on-time performance was actually 76%. So for the first time since we've, again, began tracking data like this, we've exceeded our performance goal. And then lastly, I did want to talk to you just a little bit about our performance goal. Again, this is a baseline for us. For this year, we're striving to achieve an overall on-time performance at 75% or greater. And talking with our consultant from Nelson Nygaard, I posed the question to him and said, you know, based on what you know about our system, the way that we are tracking our on-time performance, what would you recommend? What's a reasonable expectation? And he had indicated that 85% over the long run would be a, certainly be a reasonable stretch goal for us. So we will be looking forward to adjusting that goal upwards as we move forward.
Jason, I'm sorry, are we still using Nelson Nygaard? Do they work with us from time to time on continuing to tweak this and...
You know, we haven't used them too much since April, although, you know, when setting some on-time performance goals, and they're absolutely there for questions from time to time. As we look at potential other expansions, you know, if we decide to look at other options for evening service, we'll certainly bring them into the fold on that.
It just felt like that was a very good consultant selection. I think they did excellent work for us.
Yeah, I would agree. And so now that we've looked at a little bit of quantitative data, I wanted to share a couple of survey responses with you as well. We were fortunate enough to be able to work with the Planning Department, who was actually working with the University of Oklahoma College of Public Health, and they were working on a survey project to determine, since the service enhancements and route changes, has accessibility improved for customers of the bus system? And in particular, they were looking at access to like grocery stores, healthcare, opportunities for physical activities such as parks and so forth. And some of the questions from their survey, we thought, you know, really gave us a good sense of what our customers were saying about our service enhancements. So wanted to share some of those with you. The first question here, what's your impression of the route changes? You'll notice that about 52% of the survey respondents indicated that the routes are better than they were before, 16% about the same, 20% worse, and 12% had no opinion. At the same time, when the question was asked to the customers if they spend less time waiting for the bus since the service changes, almost 60% agreed that they spent less time waiting for the bus, which of course was one of our objectives of rolling out the enhancements that we made. 17% had no opinion, and then 24% disagreed with that statement. And then the last survey question here is simply, does the bus take me where I want to go? And you'll notice that 83% of the survey respondents, the customers on the bus, indicated that yes, the bus does take them where they need to be. And so from a transit agency perspective, obviously, when you're allocating resources and wanting to make sure your buses are running where people need to go, this is very, very good news for us. As I mentioned earlier, another recommendation from the Nelson Nygaard study or the Transit System Analysis was to take a look at our bus stop placement. And the consultant had a couple of, or actually three observations for us. One is they had indicated you have too many bus stops out there. People are generally willing to walk a little bit further if they can get a faster, more reliable service. So we have trimmed back the number of our bus stops from in excess of 1,500 to right around 1,285 system-wide. The other thing that our COTPA Board of Trustees has done is they have adopted a new bus stop policy that we are transitioning to, and the new bus stop policy essentially indicates that buses will only stop at designated stops. Prior to the bus stop policy, we would stop at any stop in addition to any far corner, and as you can imagine, depending on the route, that can certainly have an impact on service and slow the route down. So, and then lastly, one of the items the consultant had mentioned is that when they were talking with stakeholders, stakeholders had indicated that the bus stops were not very visible, that in fact, a lot of the signage just kind of blended in with the background of the city, and you just really had to look for some of the bus stops. So I'm pleased to report that Phase 1 of our bus stop sign replacement project is complete, and we have replaced all of the Metro Transit signs with the new blue embark bus signs that you see now. You'll notice that the blue is much more visible. It's, the signs are made of a highly reflective material. They're all attached at a specified, consistent height, and we're very pleased with how the project turns out and turned out, and hope you agree that they are much more visible than what they were in the past. The second phase of our signage project will actually bring an additional level of information available to our riders that really have never been available at bus stops before. And our second phase, which we'll be getting shortly, will entail going back and attaching route information signs. This is the flag-style sign you see on the far right of the example on your screen. Essentially, it will advise customers what routes serve that particular stop. In addition to that, we'll be attaching a unique bus stop ID to each one of the bus stop signs, and the significance of that bus stop ID is that is what our customers will use to be able to receive a text alert of when the next bus is going to be arriving at that stop. I have an example of what our customers will see if they use our texting service, and I will say, this service is available now. However, our unique stop IDs are only available for our major time points that are printed in our schedule. So once we complete Phase 2 of the sign project, this service will be available at any stop in the system. And so if you'll look here at the example, it's pretty simple to do. A user or a customer would simply type embark, followed by the route, which in this case is Route 3, the unique stop ID, and then you'll notice what is returned in a text message is the expected arrival time of the next two buses. The other thing that I think is neat about this application is you'll notice it has the ability to refresh. So as you're sitting there waiting on the bus, you don't have to send another text. You just simply click the R button, refresh, and the system will automatically ping the bus based on the location and the travel speed, give a new updated estimate of when the bus will arrive. So again, it's neat technology. We're very excited about being able to bring it not only to our current customer base, but hopefully it will attract new riders to the system that maybe haven't tried this before because of some of the uncertainty of, you know, when do I catch the bus and have I missed it, or is it early? And then the last portion of the sign project is attaching that very bottom sign you see. It's a customer information panel, and the next slide here kind of gives you a better idea of the information that will be on that panel, but essentially, again, we'll, starting at the top, you'll notice the different routes that serve the stop are highlighted along with a simple line map with the major time points within the route, a schedule, I'm sorry, a table showing the frequency of the routes that serve that area, as well as some information about how to reach embark, how to work the texting capabilities, and instructions on how to download our Embark Connect app, which I'll talk about here in just a few minutes. So that is kind of an overview of our sign project. At the same time, we're putting improved signage at the bus stops, we're also implementing our bus shelter project, and as you know, we identified 31 shelters across the city, I'm sorry, 31 new locations for shelters across the city. We received our first shipment of 15 new shelters in December, and we have installed our first shelter at the Belle Isle Shopping Center location on the west side of Claussen. So if you get a chance, you're up in that area, we certainly encourage you to check that out. There's a picture of the bus shelter on the screen here. You'll notice that the shelters are, again, a modern design. They're three-sided. They have security lighting. They'll have a trash receptacle. And besides the ad box, one thing I wanted to talk about was the customer information display case that you see there. And for purposes of the presentation, we have a photoshopped image of what the system information might look like, and it's going to be available to our customers. This next slide will actually kind of give you a better idea of what that, what information is available. Again, it's similar to what we're going to put on the bus stop poles, but a little bit more information. Again, route information, a simple line map. The system map will now be included at each one of the shelter locations, along with a detailed schedule of the routes that serve that location. And then up in the top right, what we're calling the Neighborhood Map, what we're really looking forward to doing here is providing a kind of a map that shows just the proximity of the bus shelter, and then we want to put in, draw in, any other connections that might be available. So not only transit connections, but if there's a bike lane connection or a trail connection, we want to be able to drop those in. And then, of course, in the bottom right is just very similar information to what we looked at when we looked at the bus stop poles themselves. So moving on to some of the techno, some of the additional technology I wanted to share with you. At the same time that we've been implementing these system enhancements and working on the signage project and bringing our AVL technology onboard, we've also been in the midst of a rebranding strategy, and I know Council is familiar with that, but some of the new technology, including our website, has really given us a lot of different platforms to try to get our new brand out there and make customers aware of embark and who we are. One thing I wanted to share with you this morning was our Journey Planner, and you can see at the right side of your screen there, the Journey Planner that we made available, I believe it was about last fall. And essentially, it kind of takes the guesswork out of trying to plan your trip. So if a customer is new to the system, rather than looking through schedules or trying to figure out what bus do I need to take by looking at an entire system map, we've been able to partner with Google Transit and essentially provide a platform for where all the person has to do is enter where they're leaving from, where they want to arrive at, and the time and date that they want to make their trip, and the Google Transit, the Journey Planner, will actually put that itinerary together for them. So the next slide here is actually a look at that same Journey Planner only on the mobile device, and we know that about 50% of the hits we get at our website come from a mobile device, so it's imperative, at least in our mind, that we have this available to anybody with a smartphone or a tablet. And so in this case, here's an example where if we wanted to take a trip, use our Journey Planner, starting at City Hall, which is 200 North Walker, want to take a trip to the Science Museum, and we would simply enter that information along with the date and time, and then you can see the Journey Planner will return an itinerary to us. So we know we could make about a seven-minute walk to the Transit Center, get on Bus 3 at Bay P. We would ride roughly 27 minutes to Martin Luther King and 50th Street and a two-minute walk to the Science Museum. So we really are pleased with the way the Journey Planner has turned out, and certainly, again, think this is one of those tools that's not only going to benefit our current customers, but again, help us reach out to people that have maybe not used the bus system before. Now, in full disclosure, I will say that our Journey Planner today, if you try it, is offline as a result of us updating our new schedule information. So as you recall, last night was our first night for evening service. Bus Route 11 increased to 30-minute frequency. We had multiple time point changes within some of the other routes, so we're in the process of uploading those new files to Google. So just give us a day or so, but then please do try it out and see what you think of our Journey Planner. We encourage you to look at it. And then the last, oh, let's see, I skipped a slide there. The last piece of technology to mention is our Embark Connect app, and this app is very similar to the OKC.gov that I believe Public Information and Office, Public Information and Marketing presented a couple of weeks ago. But essentially, it's an application that's available to our customers that allows them to report directly to us issues that they see with our system so that we can react and respond faster than if we're left to discover them on ourselves. The application allows a customer to take a picture, for example, of whatever the issue is. It's automatically geo-coded along with the time. If the customer wants a follow-up notification of when the issue's been resolved, we can make that information available to them as well. We've had about 1,000 of these applications downloaded since we launched it back early in the spring, so. And then the last topic for this morning's update is really to talk about night service. And again, last night was the first night we've ran our pilot program that was approved by City Council and the Board of Trustees, running two buses from 7:00 PM to midnight on one-hour frequencies. We run Route 23 on the north side of town, that's our 23rd crosstown, and then 11 on the south side of town along Southwest 29th. They connect at the west end of the city, out at the Westgate Marketplace, between Rockwell and MacArthur along Reno, and then there's also a connection at the Transit Center. This next slide here will give you a sense of what the routes look like on a map. I know that you're familiar with these and have seen them before, but one thing I wanted to talk about a little bit is when we first discussed the opportunity of this pilot program and we talked about, you know, the fact that it's a very limited evening service, just two routes out there, but we wanted to try to maximize our coverage area. So that's one of the reasons why we went with a north and a south-side crosstown, but then we also wanted to take advantage and try to leverage our existing link service that we already have out, providing very limited bus service until midnight during the week. So we also took a look, like I said, at our link service, and where we used to have about eight designated stops with that service, we now have 15. And you will notice that along 23rd, if you see the little link symbol there at North Meridian and at, I guess it's going to be Villa, you'll notice those are the new designated stops for our link service. So we have three along Route 23. We have two along Route 11 on the south side, and the idea there is to try to, again, provide as much coverage area as we can, as many connections as we can, and gain whatever synergies exist from that existing link service and combine that with our fixed route regular service that we're running. The next map is actually meant to give you an idea of the area that that link service covers and an illustration of where all of the individual designated link stops are. And the one I wanted to call out was we added a new link stop to OCCC. So there will now be a link bus serving OCCC on the hour, every hour, from 7:30 to 11:30 PM, and then students from OCCC can use that link service to get anywhere in the link area, but then also transfer to one of the fixed route buses at the Transit Center. So we're very grateful to be able to integrate OCCC into the mix as far as evening service goes.
I'm pretty sure OCCC is really grateful to you
Yeah.
...for working with them on that. That was such a huge priority was to let students be able to take public transit for night classes, so.
Right.
Thank you so much.
And then the last map I wanted to share with you is our paratransit coverage for evening hours. You know, we do have customers that due to, you know, physical limitations cannot ride our regular fixed route bus service, and so we also provide our paratransit service within 3/4 of a mile of that fixed route service that's now running from 7:00 PM to midnight. So again, this is another group of customers that will benefit from putting evening service out on the street, and we're certainly looking forward to further developing that paratransit service along with our fixed route service. And then the last slide I have for you this morning is to give you a sense of what our goal should be. How, at the end of this pilot program, are we going to determine whether it's a success? And there's a lot of factors that will go into that, but you know, one of the ways we at least want to look at it is through riders per service hour. That's kind of an efficiency measure for us. The more riders we have on a bus in any given hour that we're out there operating it, that's a good thing for us as a transit agency, so we want that number to be high. You can see that from the history here on the chart, you know, between 17 and 18 passengers per service hour is about what we average on our Monday through Friday service. So again, not having ran evening service, having it being a very limited evening service, we may be off-base here, but at the same time, we still wanted to have a goal. So in our mind, we are, our goal is for our evening service to produce at least half the ridership that we typically receive during the day. And again, that's based on the fact that it is a limited evening service. It's a new service, but nonetheless, we feel it's important to put a goal out there and see how we measure up to it. And so with that, that is all the information I had for Council this morning, but I will be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? It was very, I think, thorough, and I love the metrics, you know, because it's easy to make broad suggestions about how we can do better, but I think to show the sophistication and allowing the information to be out there to defend the current routes and the current frequency and seeing that we're doing the best we can with what we have available to us, I think is both enlightening and refreshing to me. David, do you want to say something?
Well, just a couple of comments. You know, I think the on-time performance is really very good. I've never been in a situation where I've had to wait more than five minutes past the expected arrival time, so at least the routes I take, I think the percentage is above the 70% for sure. And even this morning, the bus driver, you could tell, was slowing down just so we would not get there too early at some of the stops, so very good. One thing I think we need to, as a city, begin to encourage each other to do is ride the bus when you don't have to, even though you have the ability to drive. If you'll ride the bus, more revenue that the bus system receives allows us to expand the service, and I was just looking at some numbers, you know, given we probably have, Jim, maybe 40,000 to 50,000 people that work in the downtown area.
In that range.
If we could get 20,000 new riders, that would generate $1.2 million a month in additional revenue, over $14 million a year in additional revenue that would just be put back into the system to allow us to expand the service even further. So we have control over how much we want to expand our bus services by how much we're willing to utilize it. So anyway, that's the only comment. And then you might share the story. You had a complaint not too long ago about a bus being too crowded.
Yes, we did. After implementing our service changes, I did receive a complaint that the bus was too crowded, so we'll tend to... So we'll tend to take those and be okay with them.
All right. Anybody else? Yeah, Ed?
Well, there's too much good stuff in there to talk about. I mean, so much good stuff. Implementing the Nelson Nygaard stuff is incredible. But the night service, I'm certainly excited about. I want to echo what David's talking about. Those who want night service, please use Route 23 and Route 11. Those that are going out late at night on 23rd Street, please use the 23rd line. One thing I was especially excited about was to see the bus shelters protecting our riders from the Oklahoma City weather. It seems like we could, money aside, that's another issue, but it seems like we could capture some economies of scale or some efficiencies as we have a Maps 3 program that's laying down sidewalks throughout the city. We have a 2007 bond that's laying down sidewalks throughout the city. It seems like we could identify which one of those projects are along your bus lines. And then whether the money, we come out, whether we can figure out where the money comes from or not, at least if you could, it seems like you would put the footprint, which is how big?
Yeah, roughly about maybe 12 by 8, maybe slightly larger than that, as far as the actual pad that would be needed for a shelter.
Yeah, so even if you didn't have the money for the bus shelters today in 2015, you might, five years from now, and if you got the concrete pad down now while you had the crews out putting the sidewalks in, you'd capture a lot of efficiency that way. I wonder if there might be some utility of just having the Maps 3 Sidewalk Subcommittee look at it, identify the ones that are on your, I know the money is another issue, but at least identify where those, where that overlap is.
Right. You know, we have done some work with Public Works in that area, and now anytime there's a geo-bond project that widens a street, I believe some of the street scape projects also, you know, we are weighing in on those projects early in the design to try to do just that. But, you know, we're certainly, again, like you say, you know, money's always another issue, but we're certainly open to working with them and having a seat at the table and at least making that information available. But these are our bus routes, and this is where we would recommend, you know, potential future locations.
Great. Thank you.
We can certainly do that.
One of the things I'm excited about is how excited Jason and Kevin are about their ability to implement new services and make the transit system better. So I do appreciate your enthusiasm.
Thank you.
And we did kind of gloss over their latest tagline, which was "See you later" for the later services being convenient. I kind of like that.
And I just downloaded the app. It's not hard to do, so.
Okay, fantastic. All right. I've used it myself a few times, so I think you'll find it very easy to use.
All right.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Jason.